We'll be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter biweekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, ready? Do the hammer.
Okay, hammer again. Good evening. This is the January 12, 2023, meeting of the Exeter Planning Board. In the absence of the Chair and the Vice Chair, I as Clerk have to chair this meeting. However, our regulations require that, in their absence, that the meeting itself elect a Chair pro tem. And I'm perfectly willing to do that.
I'll make a motion that Pete be our Chair pro tem for this meeting.
And I'll go second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I think that what I would like to do is postpone the approval of the minutes until we get the Chairman and the Vice Chair here because they have added integral parts to those sets of minutes. So I will entertain, I have a motion please for someone to table the minutes until the next meeting, which is February 26?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, the next item of business is our, is the two public hearings. In essence, there are two items on the, oh, excuse me, I should introduce the members of the board. I apologize. To my far right is?
Jen Martel.
John Gruder.
Dan Shartran, alternate, and tonight I guess I'm acting.
Well, I will, as soon as we've all identified ourselves, then I will appoint the two.
And Nancy Belanger, Select Board Representative.
Okay, tonight, Dan, you'll be acting. We've moved the minutes. Now, the next thing we should be going on to is the two public hearings that have been noticed. And I think that what I would do is, in lieu of trying to do anything more than, well, let's split them. There are two sets of amendments to the zoning ordinance, one having to do with the floodplain development, and the second having to do with a much more extensive and detailed review of the entire zoning ordinance. And I think it's important that at least we will consider first the floodplain development ordinance. And Dave, have you got anything you want to add with respect to that? I know we've had-
I do, I do, but I know there's only one public here, and they're here for the second item. So would you mind switching those?
Not at all. I'd be happy to. So we'll move the, we'll move the discussion of the, it's actually, it's both a replacement and a tidying up of the existing town ordinance. Dave, would you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, thank you. This has started quite a long time ago, involved multiple committees and so forth, because after we adopted the 2018 Master Plan, it had about, you know, a little under 100 action agenda items to address for the town from that. So quite a few of those are related to zoning and examining zoning, putting infrastructure, you know, allowing growth, but where infrastructure exists, being a more sustainable community, and so forth, looking at, you know, trying to incentivize infill development and so forth. So, and examining where residential and housing should be, and maybe where, you know, areas to avoid, you know, further, you know, density. So this project-
Excuse me, Dave. I know everybody knows who you are, but-
Oh, Dave Sharple's Town Planner.
Thank you.
So we embarked on this, you know, the Housing Advisory Committee was involved, the Master Plan Oversight Committee was involved, this board was involved. So we started down to try to, you know, look at the zoning ordinance kind of holistically and try to do all of the changes that, you know, are potentially the changes to reach the goals, multiple goals in the Master Plan. So we embarked on that, and then I realized that it was a pretty large effort to do in-house. We ideally wanted a, you know, professional help. So as I do, I constantly keep my ear to the ground for grants, and an appropriate grant came up this summer, and I applied for it the day it opened, because I knew about the timeliness of this and the density of this and the scope of this. We needed as much time as possible. So I applied for the grant, and I received an award letter in August, and then we contracted with the Horsley-Witten Group, who did our, who did our Master Plan in 2018, very excellent group, consultant group, in my opinion, done great work for the town of Exeter. We went through the interview process and so forth, and we hired them. We identified them as the recipient. The grant was brand new, this Invest New Hampshire grant, took quite a bit of time to get the grant agreement out to us, so that by the time we signed it, it was in late October, I think it was October 21st when we signed the grant agreement. So we couldn't have Horsley-Witten do any work because we didn't have the funds to pay them, and when you pay, most grant agreements, including this one, have language that they're not going to retroactively pay for anything, any work you've done. So we kind of really got started to hit the ground running at the end of October. And that's a pretty tight window. We're in a town, we get one chance at a zoning amendment each year, and that's in the warrant in March. So I made it clear, I thought, to the board that we're going to continue like as if we could possibly get there, but in any, you know, wait until, move toward like we're going on the 2023 warrant, but if we're not to a point of level of comfortability and feel very comfortable about the ordinance and the changes, that we'll just continue the process and not go to the 2023 warrant with all the intention of getting a really good product and getting on the 2024 warrant. Said that a few times. So I'd like to hear some public comment. We're here for public comment, but I do want to say, and I don't, I know the Chair and the Vice Chair aren't here, and I would suggest continuing, you know, having the second public hearing in January 26th as well, but also for the floodplain ordinance, but I'll get to, we'll talk about that later. But I wouldn't, I don't think it's quite ready, because one internal review criteria for me is that I need to read this, I've probably read this document front to back, you know, maybe 10 times, very carefully, methodically, but every time I read it, I have more, I have another question or two comes up in my mind that I have, need some clarity on. And my goal is to like read it three times in a row where I don't have any questions. So then I know that I'm comfortable with it. Nothing's news popped out because it's very dense, it's very complex, and I just want to, not a ton is changing as you see in the reader, but it's pretty dense, and I just want to make sure it matches up with the Master Plan goals and so forth. So I guess I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable moving it forward to the 2023 warrant, and I wouldn't suggest the Planning Board do so, and I would like to just continue the process. And one thing I would recommend is, I think it's real dense, and I've been doing it, and we didn't really have time to do it as a board, is maybe take a little bit of time out of each Planning Board meeting moving forward, that there's space on the agenda. You know, some meetings, maybe you don't want it, but have a little space and kind of go through it one, you know, start to finish like I do. I look, you know, and I have an outline of how I review it, and I'll give you that, and we can go with that, so everyone on this board will be comfortable on exactly what's changing and what's not, and what it is. So I would feel more comfortable if that was the case, and, because I'm not even ready yet, so I don't, I don't believe that we should move it forward, but I want to hear from the public, and then, you know, maybe on the 26th, we hear from the Chair and the Vice Chair and others that couldn't make it tonight.
Thank you. And although we didn't really open the hearing as such, but we will now open it to the public, and I think we have one person who would like to speak?
I'm the public.
You are.
You are, thank you.
And she showed up for the forum on January 5th as well, so it's good to have her here. So at this point in time, if you would step to the microphone, which should be working, identify yourself, and we will be anxious to hear what you have to say.
I'm Laura Barker. I actually came for clarity, because when I went to the last presentation, I wasn't clear on what was happening, and as I read through it, I was more confused, and as a layperson, I wanted to come listen to what the feedback was going to be. I love the goal of where we're trying to go, but there's got to be a map to get there, because, you know, he said everything kind of perfectly. You get one shot at this to do it right. And I was very pleased when he told me that he thinks it needs more time, so, you know, that's, that's just my opinion, but as the public tonight, there you go.
Dave, how many people showed up two weeks ago?
Twenty.
Twenty?
I've been asked by a board member, Mr. Shartran, would you please leave your address with Dave Sharple?
Or just tell us for the meeting's purpose?
62 Beech Hill Road.
Thank you.
70 Beech Hill Road.
Got it. Okay, it does seem to me, I don't see anyone else in the, in our empty meeting room here. So I'm going to close this part, if in fact it is open, and take it back to the board. Now, you've heard from Dave as to what his thoughts are. I will share with you a concern, or my concerns, that quite frankly, it's a lot of reading. And I found, even with a little bit of a cheat sheet, that I was not going to be able to really comprehend enough to be intelligent and contribute to the board. So I don't know, let's, I'll let you all, Nancy, have you got anything you'd like to?
I actually am really glad Dave said what he said, Mr. Sharple said what he said tonight. I agree with you, Pete. I've read this and read this. I would be more comfortable pushing this out a year if that's what everyone decides. I will continue to read it. I would hope that we continue to have discussions amongst us and the public if we wait until 2024 to put it on the warrant article.
Well, it does seem to me that we need to do this right.
Yes.
And to push it, we might miss something or might not have enough time to hear from the public. And if we can take it in bites, it does seem to me, and those will be noticed, on every, for every hearing, that we're going to talk about or discuss or think about section such and such. And at that point in time, I think we will all have an opportunity to have, focus more on that section rather than four or five other sections that are all coming. So that I think, at least Nancy, you, Dan, have you got anything? I could go ladies first, but I'll-
I have two things. First of all, our Town Planner is the best planner in a town that I've ever met. So if his instinct is, let's continue this process as if we were going to put it on the warrant, but let's seriously look at pushing it out a year, I trust that. That's my first comment. I think there's a lot of wisdom there and a lot of practice. Dave hasn't just been a planner in the town of Exeter, I think he was the planner in Summersworth as well. Yeah, so a lot of experience, and I trust that experience. So my inclination is to go with what the Pro says. My second comment is, that's not to say that this is a flawed approach or a flawed document. I think that this might be one of the most important things this town has done since it did the Master Plan in 2017 and 2018. And the reason why it's so important is that that Master Plan had the most public input of any process that I saw in the six years I was on the Select Board. It was just, it was kind of a magical time where a lot of people showed up, a lot of people provided input for that Master Plan, and it was a vigorous and, and, I'm trying to think of the right word, it was a vigorous process, but it wasn't a contested process, so to speak. It was, there was a lot of unity that came out of it. And so the Master Plan is this brilliant document, and it's really a North Star for me in terms of thinking about the town of Exeter and where we want to go in the future. So the reason why this is so important is because this is trying to align our zoning ordinance with that magical process that we undertook with that Master Plan. And I think that's so important, because it's such a great, the Master Plan is such a great document. So now to take our ordinance, our zoning ordinance, and try to conform it to that brilliant document is, is well worth the time, and it's worth taking an extra year to get it right. So those are my two comments at the moment.
Thank you, Dave. John?
I certainly agree with what's been said so far, and I think, David, your idea of maybe taking this maybe a little bit at a time over the next year, you know, give us an assignment for the next meeting, that we're going to read this, this many pages, and let's discuss those, review them, help each other understand anything, or look for a flaw maybe. I doubt there's a flaw, but there's, just take a hard look at it, so we all better understand it. Did you get a lot of questions two weeks ago, or just people, inquiring minds want to know?
Yeah, I think we got, if you, once the video's up, I think there were a lot of great questions. There wasn't any, oh, I don't like this, don't do that. I think it was more questions, but they were very thoughtful questions, and that's another layer, not that I already kind of thought where we were headed or figured where I was going to recommend we had tonight, but a lot of good questions that I think I need to see again, write them down, make sure, you know, there's some questions about sustainability, you know, and just make sure that they are addressed, because they were all really good, thoughtful comments, and I want to make sure they're incorporated. And, you know, this was January 5th, and just not going to be able to do it in the next couple of weeks, so, and, but we got some really good comments. Yeah.
Jen?
I am going to agree with what everyone said, and it's a little selfish on my part, but I haven't unfortunately had the time to really dive into the document yet. You know, I have, and I missed the meeting where Nate presented the changes to the Planning Board, although I have watched that meeting and heard the discussion that happened from that. I feel like I need to spend more time looking at it, and it's daunting. So the idea of breaking it into chunks, I completely, I really like that idea. And I also think that, you know, we as a planning board really have to understand it before we can provide our stamp of approval, and I think we also need to understand what the public feels about it. And I think having the public meeting is great, but I think we might need to have several public meetings in order to really get the buzz around this. I mean, that one was, I think, a little tricky timing, just because it's like right after the holidays, and I know everyone's kind of crazy busy getting back into things. And so, you know, maybe we need to offer several opportunities to, to provide feedback through different, you know, maybe not just their own, maybe they're not all meetings, maybe we have online feedback, or, you know, there's lots of creative ways to solicit input, but it's, it's also important that people understand what's in it. So, you know, it's really two parts. It's education, what does this mean for our town, and it's, and what do you think of the change? So I think that it's great, I think let's spend the next year doing that, like, I mean, there's really no rush, it's not an urgent thing.
And funny you say that about a public forum, I was thinking about, because in-person forums, I don't think have been as successful since COVID, and I think we're going to try and other, try to do a virtual forum, where there is no physical location. We have it, it's just a virtual meeting, and I want to see, I want to try that and see if that gets better attendance, because maybe a lot more people are willing, can, they can sit there and do their dishes and tune in, and if they want to hit the chat button or the question button or raise their hand, you know, they can do it, so they don't have to get a, I've been hearing that that's been successful in other, you know, for other endeavors, so I'm looking to try that too, because I, yeah, I wasn't happy, but, you know, I mean, 20 people's great sometimes, but it's not, you know, it's, we need more people. We got several hundred on the Master Plan, pre-
It wasn't equivalent to, yeah, what we had accomplished with the Master Plan, and that was pre-pandemic, so I like your idea of-
Yeah, so we're going to try all sorts of ways to get everyone involved, so thank you.
May I have a follow-up? So Dave, with the contract with Horsley-Witten, do we, will it include more public?
Yeah, they-
Oh, do we need to add budget?
You know what, I mean, I've always said to the board, kept it in the board, that like, you know, we're going to work diligently toward this, like, you know, give us the option to put it on the 22, 23 warrant. But I always knew that, you know, like, I kind of, a lot of me knew that this isn't going to be ready, it's, it's too dense, but let's keep moving, because I didn't want it to be like, ah, you know, I'll put it off for you, I wanted the process to keep moving. So they already knew that.
Okay.
We already made it clear to Invest New Hampshire and to Horsley-Witten that maybe 2023, if not 2024, that was always in the cards. So their contract is to finish the whole scope of the work.
That's what I wanted to make-
And they, they're, they're good.
They're good with that one.
So they'll just, we'll just kind of, instead of, you know, them being here tonight and on the 26th and writing more and revising more, we're going to save that as, you know, over the next, you know, eight months or so.
Perfect, thank you so much.
So they're in.
Well, I think one of the things is that our existing ordinance works. Yes, there are things that need to be, I'll use the word modernized, but nonetheless, it's not an unworkable document. I don't think, now, maybe I'm wrong when I say that.
I'll make a comment on that.
Well, okay, that's-
To loop back, I think the purpose of really trying to do this new zoning ordinance is, again, to align us with this new Master Plan that we wrote in 17 and 18, which is really a brilliant document. And, and it's also, our zoning ordinance does currently work, but it doesn't really come to grips with where we want to go as a town and where forces outside of the town are going to come to bear on the town. And I think what's great about this document is that it wants to align us with the Master Plan, and it also wants to try to come to grips with some of the forces that are spiraling housing prices out of control in other towns and in other regions and in other states. So that's why I like this document as it is currently conceived. It is a bit different, it takes a bit different approach to zoning than we've traditionally taken. It reduces the number of zones from 18, I think, to 11. There's a whole bunch of stuff going on here, and to the person from the public that had their comment, it totally makes sense that you have more questions than you got answers last week at that public session. But that's really the purpose of what we're trying to do. There's no trying to sneak anything by anyone. This is about aligning us with our Master Plan and really not allowing outside, outside forces like demography and people wanting to move to New Hampshire to spiral our, our housing prices and our tax, our tax, how much we pay in taxes, out of control. It's really trying to come to grips with some of these forces that we've seen in other places and we know are coming here. So that's why I love the process that we have started to undertake and that we will continue to undertake. If that, I was trying to kind of springboard on what you were saying. Yes, what we have now is good enough for right now, but it may not be good enough over the coming, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years.
But, yeah, okay. My concern is I don't want the public now to think, oh my God, we've got a document that doesn't work.
No.
And that was, that was what I was trying to say, that, that what we have now does its job. There's another job for it to do, and that's what you have raised, and that's the job to address the change brought about by the Master Plan. I think that's what you're-
And outside forces.
Yes.
We know are coming, are already here, but are going to intensify.
Yeah, but I don't, again, I'm concerned that the public may somehow think, oh, we've got a, we're in deep trouble because our document isn't any good. And I just wanted to be sure that the public understood that what we have is good, it needs more.
Could be better.
Yeah. I don't think I've overstated that, but I think-
No.
So that, it seems to me that what we would, what we should consider now is, is a motion to, or something to take this and give a kind of a roadmap as to what we're going to do in the near term as well as the longer term. And Dave, you're still-
I'm not sure a motion is needed. I mean, the only time you, you should have a vote is you vote, if you wanted to put it on the 2023 warrant, you would vote to do so. But if you do not want to do that vote, you just continue with the process. I'm not sure there's any vote to be had.
We'll have a consensus of the board then. Is that the best way to address it?
Mr.-
However you'd like.
A follow-up question on this one. So we'll, but we'll wait. We'll still have this for our January 26 meeting. So the other people who aren't here tonight can weigh in, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should continue with the two public hearings we've told the public about.
Yes. And that, that's what I would suggest. There has to be a motion to do that.
No, we've already, we've already, you've already discussed that and those will happen and have already been noticed.
All right. And that's, the, the public hearings will be nothing but good information for us going forward.
Yeah. See if we can get any more public input from folks.
Yeah, there might be something that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The process continues. But I will say, can I, can I respond to about the current zoning, the question?
Absolutely.
I think, I agree. You know, our current zoning is good. The majority of our zoning, which I've said, the majority of the language in the current zoning isn't changing. I think what people might not understand is you, when you, and it's rightfully so, is when you say, replace, delete in its entirety, throw this out and replace with this, it seems like a, you know, big deal. And it is, it is, there's a lot. But the reason for that is when you condense zoning districts, it reverberates through the whole zoning district. Every reference to RC needs to be changed to RT. Every reference to C1 needs to be changed to C. They're not necessarily substantive changes, but they, they're throughout the whole document. And most of them are just, all they are is just changes without any substance behind them that relates into something that's different than before. It's just clarity and consistency. But the other way to go about it is just list all the amendments. But there's so many of them, so many non-substantial amendments, it becomes, you know, it would become laborious or it would be too much to explain. It's confusing both ways. So I gotta, we gotta get that across with, with that. But then the idea behind this, I mean, a lot of it's to do with housing. And the current zoning, I don't, not sure it really works that well because you got to look at what's happening on the ground and what's happening in Exeter. We've grew, we grew more than any county in Rocking, I mean, any town in Rockingham County between 2010 and 2020. We added almost, I think, 17, about 1743 or 1643, somewhere, residents in town. We went from 14 and change over 16,000. The next closest municipality was Portsmouth, who added 1,100 people. So by percentage of population and actual numbers, we outpaced everyone. But a lot of it, a lot of the units was done outside of zoning, through zoning board of adjustment, through relief, through variances and so forth. So that tells me, and I'm not, you know, that's not to say that, that tells me that the current zoning might not be working because you have to go outside and, and things are getting built that are prohibited under our current zoning. So what you want to do is you want to try to, you're like, okay, is it because they're going to here because you're not incentivizing or providing incentives of where you want growth to happen and people are just choosing where it goes and it's going through a different process than it normally would, like permitted by right? So I see that as kind of a, you know, like, let's get that, let's get that right. Let's, let's write an ordinance where we get development, development happens, but it happens within the ordinance because we provide incentives and steer housing to the type we want and where we want it. Those are the big, those are like kind of the two major things about this change. Because I think if you keep doing greenfield development, keep building out, it's, it's costly. It's costly from a financial, from a taxpayer standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, from a, I mean, any way you want to look at it. You know, trying to focus and incentivize if you're going to grow and absorb where infrastructure exists to support it without keep adding new costs to the taxpayers. So that's kind of a key thing that I don't see that this zoning does. And another part about it is housing prices are skyrocketing. And it's very difficult, including my kids right now, trying to find, you know, wanting to stay in this area. So there's got to be something about that. And the MUND that we adopted, a project just got submitted just a little while ago to the zoning board because it's a funky shaped lot, but they're going through the MUND process. And that requires, that gives relief on density, but requires 10% affordable units. And I think that needs to be expanded a little bit more in, in town and up along, you know, certain areas where infrastructure exists. And I think we should expand that to try to get a little bit, I mean, 10% is 10%, you know, it's something to get affordable units because that is really an issue. I mean, we went to, I'll tell you later about a Rockingham Planning Commission I went to last night. But that's, that's a serious issue and a lot of major employers, manufacturers, where Aaron from, you know, when those variants were granted, multiple corporations in Exeter, you know, wrote letters of support because they need housing for their employees. So it's a, it's, it's a pretty critical issue and that's what this proposed zoning ordinance needs to, needs to address, which I don't think our existing ordinance does. So overall, it's good, but I think there's a couple of things that need to be changed. And once you get into that, it kind of necessitates that domino effect of affecting, you know, having to replace, you know, delete in its entirety and replace with. But we can, now we have a little bit of time, we can, might be able to massage it. So we don't do that and we leave and we say, okay, we check, we'll do an amendment to section 1A, you know, so we might be able to massage it, you know, to, to make it not sound that way as scary as it is, but achieve the same thing. Does that make sense?
That's fine.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to comment. You were talking about the cost of greenfield development and why we want to move away from that. It's also the most politically costly development. It's the development that tends to create the most division within the town. And we can't afford that. We need to be united. So that's the other reason to move away from that type of development. It's costly to the taxpayers. It's environmentally costly. It squanders existing natural resources and it's politically incredibly divisive.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, they are property rights. So I'm not like saying, don't do it. It's just try to incentivize to kind of steer it because we, we don't, you know, there's things we don't control, there's property rights involved, but let's try to steer it to where, you know, we can't control everything, but let's steer it to where we want. Because it is, I agree with you. It's, you know, infill is so much, so much more productive from a financial, economic, environmental, any way you look at it, in my opinion. And the data is they had to back it up. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything?
I just have a couple of procedural questions for you or for Mr. Sharples. I guess number one would be if, I was wondering if at the next public hearing, maybe we could have a little bit of, like a proposed direction on what the next year might look like in terms of how we might start to, start to kind of digest this and, and go through the education process and the feedback process that we mentioned. Because I could just see it being something that it's like, you know, we get busy with hearings and applications and whatnot. And it's kind of like, oh, the last 10 minutes, all right, let's talk about this. And it's the end of the night and whatever. Like, how, how do we make sure that this is a priority that we continue to work on in a way that's like really, we can digest it all in one piece and, and get through the whole thing within the course of a year?
Well, that's a great question. And I talked with, I told, informed Bob today about my strategy and what I'll get for you next, next meeting is I, I approach this in a certain way and outline, I'm going to make that outline of how I go through this ordinance. And, you know, definitions, there's definitions. There's section by section. There's looking at the analysis of the zoning map. There's looking at specific major issues like, that people are concerned about is height, density, lot size. Going to have maps for those to overlap and see what is exist, what's now. So I will have an outline for you. We won't necessarily start next meeting, but I'll have that outline for you that will outline that. And I also, Barb has also put it on as a standing agenda item for our, for our planning board meeting. So it'll be a standing agenda item. And we'll have that outline of all those steps and walk right through them.
Okay.
And then it's fluid. If you, if something doesn't work and we want to, you know, change course, we have plenty of time to do that. But let's start, I thought that would be a good place to start.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm glad you're already thinking about that because I was like, ah, how do we do this?
Yeah. Because I, I realize that, that, you know, people like, okay, how do I do, you know, how do we do this? How do we get them all, you know? So that's what I came up with today and I'll get you that for the 26th.
Okay. And then my follow-up question is just, I'm curious about, you know, we need to get feedback from the public. We also need to sort of have the communication with the ZBA, I would think. I would love to hear what, because, you know, the ZBA is who, you know, implements and enforces this. And it seems like in the, no?
No. The municipal officials, the building inspector, the code enforcement officer administers and enforces.
Well, the ZBA gets to-
The zoning board is, the purpose of the zoning board is if someone wants to, someone has a property and looks at what they can do and what they can't do. And if they want to do something that they can't do, or they can do via what's called a special exception, that's when they go to the zoning board. So they ask for a special exception, which is basically probably a little duplicative of the planning board process. The special, special exception criteria kind of touches on a lot of the same issues that the planning board does, but it's just like an extra layer. It's for those Gila port, gas stations, you know, kind of those uses that can be pretty intense and, and might be impactful to, you know, more impactful than maybe other uses to surrounding properties. Or it's mostly prohibited. You're not allowed to do it. So you're not allowed to do it, but you go to the zoning board for relief. And the state statute lays out five criteria that you have to meet.
So it's almost like a judicial function.
It's a quasi judicial board. Yes.
You have a burden of proof. The applicant has to meet the five criteria.
Correct. And that's why they go there. That's the only, well, there's a equitable waiver, an equitable waiver, but that's very rarely used. You know, those are the three things that the ZBA will see. So I understand, you're right, that they have a lot of influence. And that is part of it at the master plan oversight committee. And this is another thing we'll, we'll continue. Remember when we, we invited the chairman of the ZBA and we met with him and wanted to kind of get him inclusive into the project? And we left it as they were going to get us a working group from the ZBA to join us in the process. And that hasn't happened yet. So in, in the time, you know, and I understand people's times and that board has had some, you know, some folks, you know, leave. So, so they're, they're, they're trying to get their feet under them, but we will continue that process and, and try to bring them in. Because I think it's a great point by you. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I guess, I misspoke, but that, I see, it seems like an important step because, you know, you can have the, the best code in the world, but it's really, if you can get a, if you can get relief, yeah, exactly. If you can get relief pretty easily, then, you know, we have the situation that we have now. So we want to try to avoid that.
And I would almost argue then, that might be something wrong with our existing zoning ordinance. If, if you're getting a lot of variances and a lot of special exception and people are constantly, you know, not doing what, what this book says, then I think you might want to revise this book. You know, unless it's completely out of, you know, like what's happening is completely against anything you, you know, you want to happen. But I, I don't see that the case. I think we should just come more, we should limit those. And, you know, people like look at this and want to develop a property under the rules that we have, ideally. Great, great point.
Looking to my right and my left.
Are we good on that?
Is there anything, even though we've kind of closed, is there anything more that you would like to add at this point, having heard some deliberation on our part here? Because it's important, again, to have input, reaction, I guess, whether, whether you're, you're sitting there and shaking your head and thinking, oh, where?
I had-
Please step forward. I, this is a little bit out of-
So, again, Laura Barker, Beach Hill Road. I had three businesses in town. I have one now. Not because we went out of business, not because we couldn't make money, but because we couldn't get employees. Not because we couldn't pay them, but they couldn't find a place to live. So that feeds in to all of this, you know, it's, it's another part of why I'm so interested in this because two of my businesses are gone because of a simple fact, people couldn't find a place to live. I think that says a lot.
That's great.
Well, it's, I think, it's obvious to everyone. How about that?
Yes. We've been working on this for the Housing Advisory Committee too and invited businesses to explain that. As our chair for the evening is on that committee too and knows full well. So we're working on trying to find solutions. Hopefully you can sell your businesses back out.
But, but the great thing about what you just said is that it really points to the need for maybe some kind of new, new vision because people should be able to live close to where they work. That increases vitality, not just of the town, but the town's businesses. And you've made that point perfectly. So as a business owner in town, that's a concern for me as well. And it's a big part of what spurs me to be involved. So.
Yeah, that is a great point. Because I always come back to, in anything, in a ecosystem or an economic system, you need biodiversity. Biodiversity breeds resilience. So if you all, if you rely on a monoculture, like, you know, in farming, if you rely on, you know, this type of grass and then that type of grass gets a disease, you've lost everything. So if you have 10 different types of grass and you rely on your biodiversity, you can take a hit on one and still, you know, and still be resilient and still keep moving forward. So with businesses, we need a group, you know, businesses and not having employees is, is a, is a, not having employees, being able to live and work in the community they are is definitely an issue. And it's almost like they can't even drive anymore. Like they, you know, it used to be like, oh, just drive to the next town out or, you know, go inland and then, you know, you could find something. But that's not, a lot of my people I know, they're, they've already done that. Now that's being priced out. So, and then it's, it's like, almost like there's, there's not much within driving distance now. It's, it's becoming a real issue. So that's what hopefully we're trying to solve, not, you know, do our part, I guess. Have Exeter do our part to contribute to that problem. Contribute to the solution of that problem.
Dave, has the, the staff of the planning department, I'll use it in as broad as, has the staff, has the staff reviewed or at least have there been some discussions with the internal folks as to what, what's being attempted here? Are there, are there any, any-
Absolutely. Yes. Constant discussions. I think that, I mean, I'm the one who does this all the time and I have the most time to do it. So I'm ahead of, you know, the others, which I should be, you know, because I have the most bandwidth and the most time to do it because this is kind of my purview. The others just haven't had that amount of time. And that feeds into yet another one of the many reasons why I think we're not ready. So we're, we've already established a similar outline and, and process just to make sure, because there's a lot of institutional knowledge here and there's people that have been here for a long time. And this could be very impactful to them because now they can't answer the question until they go into and, and, you know, and dig into, you know, the book. And so even though it hasn't changed, they don't know that. You know, if the setbacks are the same or this is the same, they still don't know that because it's, it's a new thing. So I am def, that's a great point. And that's yet another reason. And I think I have a strategy in place to, to overcome that. To make sure everyone is comfortable and on board with this. Because I don't think it's ready unless everyone, well, people might disagree, but at least they understand what we're doing and, and, you know, can articulate any concerns specifically if they have any. To that point, that's where I want to get to. And we're not there, we're not there yet.
Well, I guess it's, we're down, we're, the board's not there yet, obviously. And I think the mere fact that we have, we have, now have time.
Absolutely.
It seems to me, we'll get it more right. We're going to get it right, period. But maybe even more right with the longer time. But I think to go back to your point, Jay, I do think we have to have some kind of roadmap for us because all of us have other mental and physical and, and business commitments. So that we don't have the luxury of being able to take three or four or five days a week just to pour over a document. Some of us should, but we don't. We need more time. I mean, I can read, I perhaps more have more time than many of you, but nonetheless- But nonetheless, I'm not an expert in this area at all. And therefore I need to be educated. That's just one person speaking.
Absolutely. I got that. Yeah, that's yet another reason why, you know, I was like, okay, I need everyone on board. And I don't know if, well, I knew, I don't think everyone's, you know, completely understanding what's going on. So I'm not going to move ahead until we're, and everyone, you know, because I'm the one, I guess I can do it all the time, you know, like that's what I do. So, but I didn't feel that and so let's, we have the time, yeah.
I, I think we-
Let's use it. Yeah.
I think we're to a point where we, we understand what we want to try to do and what we want, what we're basically asking Dave to do. And that's give us help in understanding because certainly we're not all experts.
One, pushing it and getting it pushed out to the town so that they can-
Yeah, well, that's another thing. That if we're struggling, and we're supposed to have a little bit more knowledge, just imagine what the average person is struggling with.
Yeah, every time we wrestle with this, we're going to become more conversant with it as a board, as a town, as citizens of the town that are ultimately going to help on this. So creating more time and allowing people to become more conversant and more familiar and more facile with it, it's the right thing to do.
And Pete, if you remember, when Dave first brought this up to the Housing Advisory Committee, this idea, one of his biggest points was education. Public education.
I can remember sitting with you and talking about that.
Yes, so that he is still feeling that way. That's a huge focus of his. I think it's very important to respect that. And-
Yeah, and lastly, I'll just say this, I'm very excited about this, the extra time. Because, I mean, we do a lot of plan review and I don't, I mean, I see that as kind of, that's one of the things we do that's reactionary. We're reactive to that and that's we have to be because we wait for a plan to get submitted. We look at it, we react to the plan that's in front of us. That's one thing, but this is really where the rubber meets the road. When we have discussions about policy decisions, what we're doing, how to grow, you know. So it makes, it takes that plan review and puts it in a whole different light. How does this fit? You know, to understand both sides of that, and I'm really excited. I love those conversations. And we can get into conversations of height and density, where we don't do that during plan review because the height's 35 feet, you know, and they meet that. So we don't get into a discussion of what that means. And so I'm really looking forward to this. That's another reason, it's kind of selfish. I think we'll all become experts in it and, you know, understand all the different parts of zoning. So I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a great process. So.
Okay.
We'll have some good conversations.
Can we move on then? Okay, the next item is master plan discussion.
Nope, floodplain.
I beg your pardon. I apologize-
Mr. Chair, yes.
About that one. Okay, now that basically is, and what I will do is read what the public notice was. This was, is to amend Article 9.4 floodplain development ordinance by adding language to the ordinance to strengthen the town's resilience to increased flooding events and to reduce impacts associated with rising sea levels. Dave, I, you were the one that suggested we move.
Yeah, well, I moved it because of the public that, you know, happy to have her stay though if she wants to comment. I know she's, I know she's not in the floodplain, but this is an ordinance that I think is, is ready. It went through the, we've been talking about this internally for a while about, you know, the sea level rise. We've done several studies, the, you know, climate abdipitation preparation thing, the Cape study. The, you know, we've done, it's in the master plan to address climate risk and potential climate change. So this is an ordinance that can stand alone, doesn't have, you know, it's not related to a bigger one. And it's fairly straightforward, so straightforward that I am just going to take probably five minutes or maybe 10 tops. Indulge me and I'm going to go, we're going to go through every change in the ordinance. So everyone has the Exeter floodplain development ordinance amendment where it says, planning board meeting December 22nd, amended December 30th, 2022, in the top left-hand corner. Okay, so you'll see that the document is set up in this three different types of text. One is all solid black text. That is the existing language of our current ordinance. That means it's not changing. It's staying the way it is. Anything red with a line through it is existing language that will be removed. And anything green is language to be added. And I'm just going to go down it page by page. It's not going to take very long because it's pretty simple, but we'll get a full understanding. So as you look on the page, I'm not going to go down the regular text, the black text. That's existing. It's not changing. So we'll go right down to page 1, 9.4.2. This is adding a purpose statement. It doesn't have any criteria. It doesn't have standards, but every ordinance should have a purpose statement to saying, why are you adopting this? What is this meant to accomplish? And this is, this ordinance is to promote the public health, safety and general welfare. Minimize hazards to persons and property from flooding, to protect water courses from encroachment and to maintain the capability of floodplains to retain and carry off floodwaters. That's the purpose of this document. That in and of itself is not a regulatory statement. You can't say, oh, it doesn't meet the purpose, you know. The purpose sets up everything that comes after and the specifics are designed to achieve that purpose. So an ordinance without a purpose is kind of, you know, it doesn't have a head, you know. So the purpose is, although it's not necessarily regulatory, we needed to add it. The second one is, it makes some reference to various flood insurance studies, but then it doesn't, we add and associate amendments and revisions. You always should add that language. That's simple because as these documents, this 2005 document might get revised, then it should recognize that. If you just pick the exact date and it gets revised a month later, then technically you're still referring to a previous version of this document. So these documents are from, you know, through the Federal Emergency Management Agency or FEMA. And they get periodically updated. So that just, you know, keeps it updated. So the second night on the bottom, 9.4.3 is definition of terms. The first term that we've added is advisory sea level risk area. That's a definition I'll talk about later because it's an advisory area that we'll get to on the last page. So we flipped to page three. And we're still in the definitions. We've added the definition of flood opening. We didn't have it before. Flood opening means an opening in a foundation or enclosure wall that allows automatic entry and exit of floodwaters. See FEMA technical bulletin one, openings in foundation walls and walls of enclosure. We needed to put that in there because it is referenced in the ordinance. It should be clear on what it is. So all terms should be defined. The third one, the next one is P. That's functional, functionally dependent use, which is removed because it doesn't exist in Exeter. There's no, there's no, it's, there's no reason to have it. We don't have any docking and port facilities for the unloading and loading of cargo. We're not, and I don't think we're going to anytime soon. So if we ever do, maybe, maybe we'll put that back in there. So we can go ahead. Page four is not changing. Page five is not changing. And then we get to six. Six, you'll see the federal requirements where FEMA, for flood, flood, when you have to apply, when you have to come into compliance with existing flood regulations. According to the feds, if you do over a 50% substantial improvement to your property, you have to comply with floodplain ordinances that we're required to have. So it's kind of a chain, you know, like the feds say so, that, you know, and it works right down to us. We have to have these. We have to have a floodplain ordinance. And before we said substantial damage, we referenced the 50% of market value. But we didn't give any definition on what market value is, so you have to assume what it is. What we did was we first started with substantial improvement, the language in red. And it talked about appraised value. And it didn't talk about, it was the only choice. So you had to get an appraisal to prove the value of the home. That, a lot of, that's a little bit onerous on property owners. So we added language, the green language that we added, starting with double E. Talks about how you determine it and it's called, it's still determined on market value. But market value is defined as either the town of Exeter's assessors assessed value or the appraised value is determined by an independent appraiser prepared by the state, New Hampshire licensed appraiser. So what that does is if a property owner, property owner doesn't have to get an appraisal. They don't have to spend the money just to get a building permit to prove that, you know, they, the 50% rule. They can rely on our assessing database, which technically is, goal is to be market value. Sometimes it fluctuates. That's why we do revals, but it gives the option to say, okay, I'll assess value. But if someone thinks their assessed value is low and they might have a problem with the 50% threshold, then they can get it appraised if they so choose, but it's their option to spend the money. And then they can use the higher of whichever one they want to determine what the 50% substantial improvement is, is, you know, what that, what that line is. Does everyone understand that? So I think this makes it easier on the homeowner and it gives property owners the choice of either just go into our assessed value. It's a number. We know it, you know, and they don't have to go get an appraiser. So that was the point of that one. Then going to, down to permits on page seven, the bottom of page seven. The existing language just talked about all proposed development and any special flood hazard area shall require a building permit. And then we got into a little bit more specificity on what is required to obtain a building permit. And the applicant shall provide the proposed elevation of the lowest floor, including basement, and include whether or not structures contain a basement. If the plans include floodproofing, the elevation to which the structure will be floodproofed. So it just provides clarity. Not that we wouldn't have required this stuff before, but people can read it and understand exactly what they're supposed to submit. Instead of, you need a building permit, you know. So we want to be more specific. I'm a big believer in that. I think people that read it appreciate that because they know exactly what the standards are and what they need to supply. So that is more just information to help them. Going down.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think you skipped over a part after the appraiser discussion. There's changes to where, page seven, this term includes structures, whichever include substantial damage. It looks similar to the language I was crossed out, but I was wondering if you could just explain what's changed there.
Okay, let me, let me. This, it talks about structural damage, but what it does is it does not include, it's an exemption. And A and B are exempt from the requirements. Any project for improvement of a structure to correct existing violations of state or local health, sanitary, safety code specifications which have been identified by the local code enforcement official and which are the minimum necessary to assure safe living conditions. So say there is something, I'm not a building or health inspector, so I'm just trying to like, I don't know, something that, you know, is inoperable windows, you know, something or something like that that meets, you know, it has, you know, egress, you need, you need proper egress and this and that. And those are for life safety and they go over that 50% threshold. There's, if they're doing it just to meet that, a code enforcement officer, then they're not required to come up to flood.
Okay.
That's the first one. The second one is any alteration of historic structure, provided that the alteration will not preclude the structure's continued designation as historic structure. So if a historic structure wants to do it, then it's exempt, even if it goes over that. As long as it doesn't make it, it doesn't violate its historic, you know, status. It will not preclude the, like, so if it's a historic structure and you're, and you're ripping it all apart and you're putting vinyl siding and, you know, you're removing granite lintels and, you know, you're putting, you know, vinyl windows in, well, then that doesn't, that's not exempt. But if it's a historic structure that's in it, it can replace it without, without meeting it because it's a historic structure.
Got it.
So thank you for that. Sorry. Okay, so I did that one and then, okay, page nine. New or substantially improved structure requirements. We just added that because it used to say just new structure requirements, but it's substantially improved. So the 50% threshold that's required that we have to have, and these are the standards. And basically if you read A, B and C that got removed, it's almost similar. It's just A and B are clearer. They still require the same thing. They still require, you know, certification, but they, you know, call it out as an elevation certificate. That's what the language is used. That's the common language. Everyone knows what it is. The people that do this know what an elevation certificate is. And we just kind of say the as-built elevation instead of calling out the proper term, it's an elevation certificate. So it just makes it clear. I think that's clearer language is all it is.
Dave, did I miss that you covered the water and sewer systems or?
I keep skipping stuff?
Yeah.
Well, we- Oh, Jesus. Yeah, okay.
It's our fault.
Oh, no, that's another one. Yeah, I got it right here. Okay. This is a change. This is probably one of the more significant changes. 9.4.5 on number eight. There shall be, this is new language. There shall be no new or expansion of existing septic systems within the special flood hazard area, except correct malfunctions of septic systems.
Existing septic systems.
Yes, yes. So where, and then we struck new or replacement of existing. It says where replacement of existing and water sewer systems are proposed, they have to provide certain assurances to the building inspector. And that's already the case. But this, what this does is said, no more new septic systems within the regulatory floodplain.
Right.
It's, it's not a good idea. I don't think it, we did a little bit of a cocktail napkin GIS analysis on that. I think most, if there are parcels that are undeveloped, I think there's plenty of area outside of it to put it. There might be one or two out there that, you know, we didn't see, but it's just not a good idea to have septic systems in the floodplain. Particularly with the fact that we have an administrative order on consent from EPA on nitrogen impairment of the Swambsky River.
That's why I'm a fan.
Yeah, so, so somebody's, we're paying for this to get, you know, we paid $55 million to, and then not, not that, you know, there were other reasons for that, but a major driver of that new wastewater treatment plant that we've built is to reduce the nitrogen loading into Swambsky River. So anything that we can do to try to lessen the impact of nitrogen entering the Swambsky River, I think is a benefit for everybody, including us and downstream users.
And our relationship with the EPA.
And our relationships. So that's part of that, that's where that is. It's not a good idea and it helps fulfill an administrative order on consent. So I did cover nine, right? Let me just, okay, so nine's covered. 10, there's no changes. 11. Right now, all new construction or substantial improvement of residential structures have the lowest floor elevated at least one foot above the base flood. That's, base flood elevation is an estimated, when the base flood elevation comes in, it's called a base flood. It has its definition in there. It comes up and it's at this level. So say it's 80, right? Right now, our 80 elevation, you know, right now, if you build a new structure or substantial improvement, you need to be 81 feet. The lowest floor needs to be at 81 feet. One foot, and they call it freeboard. It's freeboard because it's one foot above, it has freeboard of the base flood elevation. So you can expect the base flood to be here and you're a foot above. Some communities do add it. Some communities do one foot. A lot of communities are doing two and some are even, you know, going higher than that. Because of the flooding situations that have occurred, you know, it seems like every 10 years we have a 100-year flood. You know, like a lot of storm surges, a lot of, you know, we have a lot more flooding issues than we've had before. A lot of significant storms and with predictions on potential sea level rise and climate change and so forth. Though it's maybe a good idea to add a foot of freeboard. So that's what it does. For residential units, it goes from one foot to two foot. And if you're making a substantial improvement like we talked about, I don't think it's a, it's a major, I don't think anyone's ever told me it's a major monetary change. Because what, think of what you're doing. You're building and say you're building new. You're building on a lot that doesn't exist. All you're doing is instead of the lowest floor at 81 feet in the example of the 80 BFE, base flood elevation.
Thank you.
The, you're, instead of building at 81, you're going to 82. So all you're really adding is a foot of material of support to that structure. So it's not, I don't see it as a big burden on people. And down the road, it can, if you meet this, you get a lot better. Flood insurance companies look at it more beneficially and so forth. And I know I spent some time, you know, I spent some time in summer, but I was also a planner in Fort Myers Beach, Florida, who just got devastated by a hurricane a month and a half ago. I was down there a little bit ago. and a half ago, I was down there a little bit ago. And when I worked there, they're, they're all about that and, and I saw a lot of houses and neighborhoods razed. And it's funny, I, I went down and took a visit because I was down in Naples and I drove up there. And all the houses that were built to the current flood regulations and above the base flood elevation as required in the ordinance were still there. And there were complete neighborhoods that were gone. I mean, like, you know, one, one house on the street that was built to current regulations is there. All the other ones that were down in the, in the flood zone that hadn't triggered the 50%, for 50% substantial improvement or grandfather, they, you know, and they, they just stayed that way, most of them were destroyed. So I've seen it firsthand, that it's definitely, this is a benefit to, you know, to get up there when you can do it. The other, the next one is, we didn't, non-residential structures, we said at BFE, base flood elevation. We said you can build at it. So we're going from zero to two feet on non-residential structures to, to be consistent with, I mean, non-residential, to be consistent with residential. We're going from one to two on residential, right? Existing is one foot above base flood elevation going to two, commercial is zero now going to two. Okay? Next, next slide. Uh, 12, this is just right up here, it says, right now, the existing says, it talks about recreation vehicles and our existing regulations say be fully licensed and ready for highway use. We remove highway use and replace it with on wheels or jacking system attached to the site only by quick disconnect type utilities and security devices and have no permanently attached additions. I think that's a more specific way of saying and ready for highway use. Because if you say you're ready for highway use, it's implied that you can get in and drive it onto the highway?
Can't.
But it's implied, but maybe you can't, you know, you, because some people do run water, you know, sewer, electrical to it, so it's not quick, can get out in a, in a situation. So we just wanted to make that clear. I think that, you know, no permanent, it makes it clear that no permanent materials. I think it's, it's the same thing, but it just makes it crystal clear on what the requirements should be, uh, what is ready for highway use. Next one, uh, the ninth on page 13, down the thing, we basically, this was to change in terminology to be consistent, they use base level and it's base flood elevation. I think that was, you know, after a while, some people put baseline, you just have to consistently stay with the exact same terms that are defined and that's, so that's not really a change, it's just a consistency issue. And then the other one, I don't know where this came from, but it says up to amounts as high, it will result in increased premium rates for flood insurance, and that's still in there, but it says up to amounts as high as $25 for $100 of insurance coverage. We couldn't figure out why we even, you know, that's not up to us.
Not our business.
But we can guarantee it's going up. If, um, you know, if you get a variance and you construct it, it will definitely go up because anybody that gives you insurance requires an elevation certificate. And if you are building below that and you get a variance for that, you're going to pay more because your risk is much higher. So they're going to know that. Uh, second, again, the base flood elevation, base flood level. Again, like base level was used up here, then base flood level, just get rid of those, use base flood elevation consistently every time. So that was a consistency thing.
Dave, you missed two on 12.
I missed?
There's one in number four and, uh, one, one word change in five.
Oh, flood openings.
No, in number four, it's the manufactured home at least two.
Oh, zero to two, oh, I can't, I can't keep it together today. Okay, so four, going back to that, I'm sorry, 12. Residential structures going from one to two, commercial structures are going from zero to two above base flood elevation and manufacturing homes are currently zero and going to two. So across the board, all the types of manufactured homes, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't put, you know, manufactured homes are residential structures. It's almost duplicative, but we're making that, it's zero now and it's going to two. Sorry about that.
And then there is a thing at the bottom about flood openings.
Yeah, minimum of two openings, we just add the word flood because that's what is defined, flood open, remember the flood opening definition? That is what you call it and you have to define it. So what is an opening? You know, an opening could be just you cut a hole in one, it has to be high, just like let the flow of water in and out, uh, so it doesn't affect the structure, you don't get pressure on the structure, it has to be able to flow out and drain, flow in and flow out.
Okay, can I have a screen over that?
I don't know, I think, I think so, there's like louver, a lot of them have louvers.
Yeah.
Louvers that, that will like, that stay, but they, if there's pressure, they open up, you know, like both ways. So they like sit down and like, so they're, you know, covered, I mean, a screen if it can block, break away, absolutely. You can put stuff that just breaks away if the flood comes in.
You get an opening, criticism, whatnot.
Correct, yeah.
For the, most of the time we did not flooding.
Yeah, like an insect screen on the, on the sides, I've seen that, they just need to just, they'll break away. I mean, if, if the floods are coming, they'll just push, it needs to be breakaway. Um, this is my remembrance of, of my Fort Myers Beach days because I dealt with this all the time. Okay, uh, minimum two flood openings, thank you. So did I miss anything on 13? I didn't, right? I went through all the ones on 13.
Have to.
And then 14, finally, 9.5 was new added section, which I referenced earlier, advisory sea level rise risk areas. So what this is, is completely advisory. It does not require anything, there's no enforcement mechanism, we don't have any standards, but we took the four-foot sea level rise scenario that, and we took that, you know, impacted by four feet of sea level rise plus a 1% annual chance flood event by 2100, like the sea level rise scenario is based on the New Hampshire Coastal Flooding Risk Summary Part One Science. We took that and said, okay, if people come in and are in these areas and we've mapped what these areas are, we're just going to let them know that they're in an advisory zone so they have the option to possibly, you know, build above the base flood elevation, find out what the elevation certificate on that land is. We're not requiring them then to do that, but I think it should, like as a land, I might, you know, I might not know and come down and say, you know, I got something near Swayze Parkway or something or build something and, you know, we're, we'd advise them, we'd say, listen, this, this could be, you know, in 2100, which isn't, you know, isn't that far away. Uh, and, you know, young homeowners or whatever might, might be, you know, inclined to say, okay, I'll just raise it up two or three feet or, or whatever, you know, whatever it is, it's not an added expense. We just want to let people know, uh, that there is a risk and advise them to, you know, that they might want to consider, uh, building at a higher level. So any, do we get a good understanding of what's changing?
I do. Could I ask a question that had, that came up during, um, the conservation commission? I know we're talking about people building homes, but the town owns property and the question was, do we have any plans for Swayze, um, for the flooding that's been happening and the concerns of it continuing? So this might not be a conversation for this, but because we own the property, right? I mean, wouldn't we, if we're thinking about redoing a road or something, that, that wouldn't have anything to do with this?
It wouldn't have anything to do with this ordinance because this is about residential structures and non-residential structures.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that's, that's a good discussion, it's a policy discussion at a higher level than I think the planning board.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to throw it out there, just, just to get it out and ask. I do have the question in an email waiting for a response, but I just did want to ask it here.
And I do know that the DPW has been great about that, uh, you know, Jen Perry's been a lot with us, but she's been great, everyone that's still there is, is very forward thinking in that and when they redo, uh, or any do any major construction, they always have that consideration, uh, you know, embedded into the design process.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think one, one thing that it does, that does sort of impact our site plan review, for example, and this is something that I run into a lot in my professional job, is when you start adding elevation to buildings, it causes accessibility issues. So then you get to start looking at how to get people into those buildings, ramps become longer, stairs become longer, that kind of thing. So it's just, it does, it does have, I think, site implications, there's more topography and stuff like that, so, um, but it, but it's, it's important. I mean, for the reasons Dave stated, like, you know, this has to be done.
Yeah, we're fortunate in Exeter because when you look at the maps, I mean, we go up, like in the downtown, this is part of, you know, the backside of the commercial areas, but we're out of it on the front side of Water Street. So there's definitely that's, you know, but we're lucky, the way our topography goes that we don't have it, because some communities, that's a major, but we're lucky enough to have only a few issues like that.
And we're lucky we have the Parkway and that didn't turn into more, you know, development, you know, because no now, that was great.
Condos on condos by the river, yes.
Because then we have flooding where the Academy Boathouse is in that little corner, this last time too, so.
Yeah, that happened right before Christmas.
Right.
Um, it was the highest I've ever seen it. And I've been perched on, in the Carlisle Building for 31 years, so.
Wow.
Yeah, the highest I've ever seen it behind the Carlisle Building.
It was hottest.
Didn't come over the sea wall, but it came down and it'll happen.
Yep.
It will happen.
I couldn't get home that storm.
Yep.
I left and I came back and I couldn't get home. 101 was closed, Winter County was closed, High Street was closed, I had to go all the way up to North Hampton to access Route 1. Route 1, Ocean Boulevard, 1A was open, but getting there, the, across the marsh, it was all, I've never, ever seen that.
Wow.
That was, yeah, so.
And that's just a preview.
Yeah, definitely a timely topic and I think this is just a benefit, it's not an overburden, I think it saves even property owners, you know, the expense of, of future risk, lowers their risk, so, uh, I think this is.
I like the commercial part.
And I don't know what the board wants to do, we have five tonight, I mean, you know, do you want to schedule this for a second, uh, public hearing, uh, on, on the 26th and, you know, the chair and vice chair will be able to weigh in at that time?
I think that's probably important.
Perfect. So hopefully somebody heard what we had to say and we kind of went through it pretty methodically, so if you have any comments, whoever's listening, you know, you can provide them to me between now and the 26th and I'll bring them to the board. And I'll bring them to the board or you can come to the 26th and we'll continue the conversation.
Should we see if the public has?
Oh, yeah.
Nope.
All right, so, uh, there had been a motion, but we're not going to do that because we're going to move it to the 26th.
Yep, it's already on, so no action is needed.
It is interesting, just as a, as a, as an aside, one of the issues with the minutes, which we didn't even get to, has to do with, uh, the word, uh, approved instead of above, but we'll come to that, we'll redo the minutes. Okay, um, where's my cheat sheet that tells me what we're, what we're supposed to do next? Um, master plan discussion.
I just have one thing real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come every, come every month, you know? I love the public, Dave.
Me too.
You know?
Helps us to keep things in perspective too.
Yeah, great points too.
Yeah.
It's just, it's really encouraging to hear stuff like that, or it's anything, you know, criticism, whatever it is, it's just, it's good. It adds to the process. Anyway, uh, master plan, real quick, I think I've told you this before, maybe a few times, but I'm just like that, I may be duplicative sometimes, but, uh, we're, I'm creating an analysis of the master plan of like all the action agenda items and what we've done for each one and the progress. And I told Russ about it, he really loves the idea, he, he wants to do the select board, but I'm going to come to you folks first and we'll go over, go over that when I get it and, uh, what we've been working on, what hasn't been, you know, what hasn't been addressed yet because there are some issues that we haven't gotten to yet and, you know, maybe, you know, prioritize. We do that with the master plan oversight committee all the time, but I thought it would, you know, write it down, write all the action items, what have we done with each one, uh, and what haven't we done? And then just, just to, you know, kind of show, you know, what, what, you know, the document that we're using it and, and what we've done to try to accomplish these goals that's set forth. So I'll be bringing that to you and that's all I have, uh, for the master plan.
Okay, then we go on to the town planner items.
No field modifications, uh, performance guarantee. There was one requested for the development off of Brentwood and Spruce Thistle, the new five lot subdivision in, in the middle there, uh, but they didn't have as-built, so I requested those and they're doing those and once they do those, I will release the, I will release the bond, but we're still waiting on the as-bills for that. Uh, announcements, I did attend the Rockingham Regional Planning Commission meeting last night that was held in Stratum at the Town Hall to, and the, our Rockingham Planning Commission did a, did a presentation on their regional housing needs assessment. It's a document that's required by state law to do, I think it's every five years they have to update it, so I think they're a little behind, I think it was 2020, but I think, you know, COVID and so forth, like, like a lot of things.
Funds.
Uh, yeah, funds, but they're, they're, they're almost done, they presented that last night, kind of a strategy, I thought it was pretty well done, uh, well attended, a lot of people had, you know, good comments to make about the housing issue in our region and how we're going to potentially achieve, you know, having housing for all, worker, you know, worker, anyone who wants to be here, uh, be able to have a, have a place to live, so, you know, I think it was a fruitful discussion, you know, yeah, Auntie joined us, Gwen, Gwen was there, so we were well represented in Exeter.
And if you come tomorrow for the housing, um, Sarah from Rockingham Planning Commission is going to have the documents available, some of them, so, and it will be available online too soon, so I can let everyone know.
And will they put that video up? That was a pretty cool little video.
That's going to be part of, yeah, she sent us the link.
I'll put it.
So I'll, I can forward that email.
All right. That's all I have with the chairman.
Our town planner was very forward-thinking, he was very responsive to questions last night, it was, it was really great. There were, there were a lot of questions though that really, more and more communities are really taking this more seriously than I think I've seen in the last few years. When we started the regional, trying to have regional conversations about housing and I, I think the idea of the economic part of this is really hitting home, that, that people want to have their businesses and they, people who can't afford to live here and they can hire people. So, um, but the, the infrastructure questions, um, about how to, um, enforce the workforce housing, park, park of this, excuse me, um, which we at the Housing Advisory Committee have had those conversations too. How do you, where's the enforcement mechanism because your, your town can't be, we'd have to hire somebody to enforce the workforce housing element, they'd have to go through it every year, right? So, um, there's still a lot to work on, but I think we're making progress.
That to me is the biggest drawback with that.
What's that?
No enforcement. You, you grant them this, but they get their end of the bargain, we keep our end of the bargain, but they don't always, after the second, third year, we don't know the count.
Yeah, I mean, with sales, it's, it's, the sales are rentals. Sales are a little bit easier because you, you put it in the deed and, and, you know, I mean, unless there's some major kind of ignorance or, or calculated, uh, yeah, calculated looking, you know.
Fraud.
Yeah, fraud, maybe. Uh, they're going to see that, that it needs a transfer certificate that gets signed by the town. So that's kind of a built-in mechanism for sales. The, one of the issues is sales where people move out and they rent them at market rate and it's no longer an affordable unit. That's tough to get because until someone tells us, how do we?
There's no way that you.
There's no way, and that's, that's one of the issues. The renting, especially the large places are probably pretty straightforward because a lot of them are property management done, so they have to do annual reporting, they're a little easier, but I agree with you. That's, and where, we talked about that last night, we've been trying to, and I think there's some conversation, conversation that started with New Hampshire Housing to possibly be that clearinghouse, because right now we use, uh, for, for our, we call them a monitoring agent, that's what they're called. We use, we had like threes on the affordable housing project we have here and we're on our third one. And I had to scramble to find someone because one of them backed out, didn't want to do it anymore and, you know, and, and, and then we were without a monitoring agent, so I had to go get one, uh, but we're using. But we're using Marty Chapman from the Housing Partnership. So I absolutely agree with you and we haven't solved it, but we're definitely having that conversation to figure it out. If we, we need to get our arms around this and how do we do it?
Contract's a contract.
Well, yeah, but until someone knows it's, if someone knows it's broken, it being broken.
We need a reporting and oversight mechanism.
Yeah. We're, we're working on it. We, yeah, yeah. I agree.
Okay. Needless to say, the chairperson doesn't have any items because he didn't, he's not here. Then, um, I guess we've heard on the other committee activities. You got anything else? Let's see, anybody other than Nancy on another committee that needs to report new?